You all may remember that we had a TIF policy, kind of high-level discussion earlier with Emily and members of Lindsey Rader. We're still working on that policy, but we've got a group who's really excited to be doing a big-scale development in Salisbury that may take advantage of a TIF, if that is something that we just choose to adopt. So I'm going to turn it over, but I want to give that introduction.
Thank you, Andy. Yes, so I wanted to come in today, as Andy mentioned, you guys have all been through the application process before, and during that period of time when we were here, we heard the council had some questions about what kind of project was involved with that and some other questions. So we wanted to come down here today and show you that full project that you'd be possibly taking over for this possible TIF application that we will have in front of you guys eventually. So without further ado, I wanted to show you guys the project here. We have already gotten full approvals from the city for 219 units, which 131 of those would be single-family homes, de-cap, as well as 88 others would be townhomes. In front of you, we put a package showing those layouts. A little packet of homes there will be the square footage of each of the homes. And we have owners who are ready that if you guys have any more questions about the physical homes and appearances and things like that, that you can elaborate a little bit more on. A few own questions last time you guys had was what project that we wanted to choose this project? You guys also had some issues about the cost behind that. I'm sure if they could go into that a little bit more with you. So oversight about the area where this complex is, is the old mall site, which I'm sure many of you are very familiar with. Really good thing about this project that we see here happening, once this was provisioned, is that the surrounding area will really benefit from this project a lot, including the commercial aspect that is right next to this project. People believe that with an influx of 219 homes, that would very much be a good addition to the overall area, including that commercials site point. There is a commercial gym across the street from this site that would actually have a good benefit from this, as well as a storage facility owner across the street has come to us with great excitement, showing that this was to come to fruition, that you would love to see an expansion of this storage facility, improving for tax and comfort that township as well. I'm here as for the questions you guys might have. Just again, this project is 219 units. We had it fully approved from the city council or from the city as well, and it's ready to go. The only issue with this site is that the monetary value behind us, this site is not visibly possible unless we have a TIF application go along with it to allow this to happen. So that's why we're here today to go over the site, to go over the TIF application, and any questions you might have for us.
Thank you. If you should explain the, I see a portion here, how do you use the whole, including the Salisbury mall? It doesn't include your, it doesn't, the whole site. There's still some more space beyond, beyond this layout, correct?
That's correct. So what you're seeing right now is the residential component of the entire, what you will know as the old mall site. Way earlier than right now, we're kind of looking over the high school that is right there to the right. When we look at this point, that's where the civic center would actually be, as well as what's across the street from what this site will be. I can't speak to what that future development will be, but there has been looked at, possibly more residential, as well as possible commercial, but that really can't be. This is kind of the horse leading the wagon, and this has to get done first before there's any more expansion along the other side of it.
Sure. Okay. I'm sorry, Andy, I thought you might be able to adjust.
We're good.
So Andy, just because I know that I was, I think, just new to council at that time when you had the application or the presentation from the folks that knew the, yes. So if you could briefly overview the process of placing and how that will affect the city, that would be...
That would be...
User error.
That would be, that would be amazing, just because I know we do have some new council members and some folks in the public. Make sure we kind of know what's going on, gives a very brief overview of that TIF process.
Sure. Good afternoon. My name is Emily Nassler. I'm with Munich Cap, our public finance municipal advisor. We're actually here about the city. So I'm here on behalf of the city this afternoon, working with Andy, the mayor, and the Department of Finance. We've worked, and then actually going back to 2021, to assist in the evaluation and preparation of three primary documents that have been out across here. And those are three documents. One is TIF policy for the city to consider. And that document, the purpose of that, is to lay out accrued needs for the city council and the city to evaluate TIF proposals such as this. And not just their project, but many sort of proposals that would come into the city so that you evaluate all those proposals the same, in all the same means, the use of those TIF funds, the recommendations that you might make related to them, and how you might want to utilize TIF. And I can just give them a explain TIF, just in case we need to have a little quick TIF online or a minute on time because we started late. I also have TIF process guidelines, which we call TIFR. This is more of an internal document that would be provided to city staff. So when a TIF application is submitted, that the council, the city staff, would only utilize this document and understand how to evaluate the various components of information that would be submitted from the developer team, so they can prudently evaluate that and bring that to council and help the council evaluate that so that they understand what to evaluate that. And then the last, and the component component, is a TIF application. And this TIF application is several pages long, but essentially provides the format and outline that a developer would submit, providing all of the necessary information for the city to evaluate the request for a TIF for their project. And so it requires them to be very open book and explain why they need the TIF, what for the TIF, why the project is not going forward, and how, as a mutual partnership, through public-private partnership, the city and the developers work together and have this, and why isn't a reasonable, a reasonable expectation for you to be a partner? Because not every project merits TIF, and that's a part of what's also in the policy, and something that the city will want to consider in when you're laying out your policy guidelines. So as I mentioned, Munich Cap has been working with staff to pull together these three documents, and they've been reviewing that. And at this time, we're waiting on a final review so that we can present that to the city council for review and comments. And eventually, the goal is to have the city council finalize, review, approve that so that this team who has this project, who wants to request a TIF, can formally submit, and then you can evaluate their request in a more detailed manner. As far as what a TIF is, let me just take a back step here. Tax increment financing, compared with special tax financing, is a way to create a development district around a specific project, and the municipality can utilize the future tax revenues from that project to help pay for key infrastructure that's needed that will allow for that project to go forward. The key is that there's a nexus to the infrastructure that's needed and paid for by those future revenues. The increment part is that the revenues that are created on that site today become the base, and those increment, the revenues there today will continue to flow to the city. So those revenues will stay in the city's general coffers, and you will continue to use those for your budget. And there are several key metrics in evaluating a TIF. It is not just pay every new dollar that comes in goes directly to pay for TIF and infrastructure. There's financing constraints, there's development constraints, there's how much can the city give up and still be able to cover its cost of services? There's cost of the infrastructure, and how much does the project need to be successful? Or how much should the project need to be able to go forward? Because if the project doesn't need it, does the city want to give up? These are all prudent, good questions that the city wants to be considering, but also should be evaluating as part of this process. And so our goal is to help make sure that these are the questions in there, and that this developer team is able to answer them for you so that when they're here having this discussion, you have the answers to make the right decisions. Tax increment financing usually paired with special taxes, and special taxes, tax off the TIFs, so to the extent those future revenues are not there, taxes, minimum tax, and the developer is on the hook to pay that special tax. Meaning, if the real property taxes are not generated by the houses here to pay the debt service and the bonds that might be issued, then the landowner or the developer would essentially be required to pay the debt service on the bonds. Those bonds are not backed by the city or not asked to be paid from the general coffers of the city. They would be backed by the special tax on the land, and that is the best practice that we would recommend with these TIF policies. But again, also, I think that we would want to come back to you with and talk about in more depth and more detail when we bring these TIF policies back to you at a later time. I know that's a lot of information very quickly. I'm going to stop right there and see if there's any questions.
So, one second. Do we have any questions from council?
Or what? Yep.
It's not about TIF. It's, does anyone have a TIF question here on council before? Because I have a question about number six on the conditions of the project.
The planning and zoning, the one that was already approved?
No, just the homeowners association is going to be created for this development. What is the thought process behind a homeowners association versus just selling the properties as they are? There's just, homeowners associations over time, over time, usually within a 20, 25-year period, do not hold up to some of the standards that are necessary to maintain such, such a development. And I just, I just wanted to know what the decision-making is between a homeowners association versus selling each individual property.
So, again, I'm always with the Ryan Holmes position, President. So the talking about homeowners association is that you are protecting the value of the community. You are setting a set of standards that is supposed to be upheld and maintained throughout. And we don't have those standards. That's when people have to go to wherever they like, and then sometimes the value of the community will diminish. Each individual home is for sale. It's not a homeowners association. So it is for the individual purchase with a small homeowners association with that. Small homeowners association will be, the things are based upon their ethnicities and the features of any given community. But this is to respect a little homeowners association, as in how a large, commoditized community.
I just still worry about the homeowners. Just research and over time, and even in our own communities, homeowners associations have not held up to the standards of keeping mainly, I see here, management of the facilities, drainage, and maintenance of the easements. So I just was curious about that. I just, I would hate to see such a nice development. It seems like we get these nice developments, and sometimes with the HOEs, over time, as it unfolds, it kind of diminishes. There's not strong leadership, there's not...
Essentially for that. I mean, so I have an HOA in my community. I can understand like the longevity of time, and you can see that doesn't, maybe if you all can commit to, you know, doing your research with property management or an HOA, to whoever's going to fund this or actually be the ones to oversee the HOA, I think that would be a good commitment from you all.
Yeah, absolutely. While we're building out, building out the town, we are in charge of that HOA and we're in place of management company, and we need the homeowners with that management company. Then also, they're able to decide on how they want to continue. Yep.
Well, we also see how management companies work here in the city of Salisbury.
HOA management, that's different than like a property manager.
And it still doesn't matter. The same thing that Angela just spoke about, it's the same thing. I'm, I'm speaking about things change in years.
Good.
Just want to make sure, I, they're the project. We're talking more about the TIF concept behind, not necessarily the actual... I know the project will come, I want to do that, that major, but I just want to be mindful of their time too. Specific to TIF, with us wanting to bring forward the policy and the guidelines of the application to council, our goal would be to hopefully get a revised, that plan in front of you all, hopefully April 1st, so we can kind of move. We've got an eager group who wants to build, but specifically within just the TIF stratosphere and that conversation, do you think?
So you're saying April 1st is when you're planning to present to council the actual TIF application?
Oh, TIF policy.
So yeah, so we have, there is, as Emily had mentioned, there is a draft that we have for final revisions that we are looking at, that then would be presented for adoption via resolution, and then we'll start this process forward. But as we're doing our final revisions of that policy slash application, we do have a project that is interested. Just this dynamic conversation could help us just think through the final pieces of that application and/or policy.
Yeah, when I spoke to you before meeting, you know, my experience has been on the bank side in terms of measuring risk. But from the perspective of the policy, the concept is to kind of put a collar around not only the purpose of the funds, but perhaps maybe the structure of repayment, what those standards are, so that as projects come in, that we can kind of adjust according to what, what each one needs. Is that what, am I understanding that correctly?
Well, I think TIF policy is actually broader for the city's perspective. So take this development and this project a step back for a minute, and just think about how the TIF should be used prudently. Munich Cap works on TIF all across the country, we work in over 30 states, and helped issue over $10 million in bonds, and so we've, you know, adapted over 10, nine out of 10 key best practices when using TIF to make sure that jurisdictions protected your risk from mitigated when you're letting it. It's a complicated tool, and so when you're doing that, and so the policies are really questions like, you know, is public assistance have merit? You know, is it state being a public goal? I mean, these are just a couple of the questions. How much public assistance is needed? And what are the tests that are being evaluated to ensure the amount is prudent? What are the benefits to the city? I mean, I'm reading directly from some of the policies.
Right.
Public versus private investment, how are the surplus tax returns being utilized? What is the economic benefit, public funding mechanisms, public support, city's financial status? What's the TIF application stake? What due diligence has been completed? Transparency of public process? These are all parts of the TIF policy considerations.
So before that, I'm assuming that council approves the TIF policy?
Yeah, so we would approve the TIF policy, again, as we try to continue with the transparency and to make sure we are treating everything baseline similar when different projects are coming in, and not isolated in one particular favorite. This gives us a baseline on how we want to evaluate stuff. It is a very complex application. This will have to be, each project will have to be evaluated on its merits, but to build that baseline to keep engaged parties moving forward and doing their due diligence ahead of time so that we have a full application that's vetted. Yes.
Are the 10 best practices, that's what you were just quoting, correct?
Yes.
You're reading from those. Are those part of the application, and would they be required as a foundation for any project that was presented for a TIF?
The way that we have a draft TIF right now is that on, we would propose, so again, this is all going to come back to you all for final review comments, just for the edits and changes, is that the application does require that applicants address how they need the city's policies. There's a whole bunch of questions in the application. But one of them does require that an applicant address how they need the city's TIF policies and guidelines. And we propose that on the city's website or some other forum, that the city posts the application as well as the TIF policies so that any applicant has access to both of them anytime prior to submitting the application.
So I would like, I'm not sure about the rest of council, but I personally would like, you know, us some, some time to actually review the, the policy. So how soon can council get this? Before you have, before you would like us to actually approve this, if we're looking at April 1st to present it? Can we have, you know, a week or so before that date to, to look at what we have so far?
I think we can get revisions done relatively quickly, and then any changes that need to happen turned around. So I don't want to speak too much out of term, but if we had something by Friday, we could probably get you something Monday that gives you a full week to review before, on April 1st.
Is that fine for us at council? A week? Okay.
Got to look at it over Easter holiday then.
Yeah, I think the actual, I mean, I don't know if you have any other questions about the actual neighborhood, the actual product. I know that's popular in the area, and, and, you know, I know people on that, and I needed to speak about the price point, but that's something that we can actually control, but I'm hoping it's reasonable. And I live in one of these Ryan Homes myself, so I know it's a, it's a pretty good one. But any other questions regarding the scope and, or TIF from council?
Just, would you be looking at being, it's all one phase, all single, it would all happen at the same time? Would this be phased in?
We would be looking, what do you mean phases? You mean self-development would pretty much be in a couple of phases? So allowing for there not to be empty lots out there, so that, so Ryan Homes and our team could have, hey, they have a good base going and continue going on, so that you work for one phase, and then two phases, possibly a third phase as well.
So it would be two, two product lines. So it would be absorbing roughly, call it, you know, each product line each year. It would be about a two-year growth afterwards. So we anticipate, you mentioned pricing, we'll be looking for our 100 homes and add like 200 price form, and then the single families and the local counties.
Okay. I think that's pretty good. All right, see any other comments from council? I know we do have some public comments. Lynn Breiten?
Good evening, everybody. My name's Melvin, I'm a little tired. It helps. So thanks for everybody. I'm Lynn Breiten, lives in Salisbury, a South LA, I haven't been on in a little years. I was at the meeting in October when we were first exposed to the TIF framework, and I have those minutes with you, if anybody wants to see them. But I know that there was a lot of discussion among, between the members of the council, some who were along with the council, and now new members of the council. So I do think we've got a lot of learning to do, and I think there's a lot of, of time for exploration of financial repercussions of something like this. I heard them saying future revenue, or getting rid of it now, but future revenues. I think there's a lot of money questions that really, the dollars and cents and the end dollar rules and, and financial impact to the city down into the weeds, the devil, the dirt, whatever you want to call it. I think there's a lot of wonderful words, but I think we really need to understand that application. Now, what I'm understanding is the city is thinking about doing a blanket policy, or you're cutting off, a blanket policy that would allow any developer to then follow these rules. So that's what I think I'm hearing, an application for anybody that would want to qualify. And we don't have that yet, but we do have a developer that's looking to try and do it. But we don't even have the infrastructure set up yet for them to apply. So I think we got to make sure we get the horses and the parts in the right order so that we're going in the right direction with this, and we make sure that the city understands what they're getting into. Because it's not something that happens all over the world, or all over this country. We would be one of not that many. As I remember from the October meeting, there weren't that many even in the state of Maryland that were doing it. But my memory on that detail is a little foggy, but I think we need to get more information. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Breiten. Do you have the, do you, as Ms. Breiten spoke about the cities and the, or you can continue. Oh, gotcha.
I have this minute.
About the cities, do you have any, off the top of your head, about the cities or the, you know, who uses this, this funding source?
Yeah, I mean, we, oh, just a couple off the top of my head. DC has a great application on their website. If you'd like to check that out, Howard County, Maryland, Montgomery County. Pinchot County, City of Baltimore, Anlau County, Frederick County. Just off.
Just a couple. So, okay, gotcha. Robert Taylor?
Good evening, you too?
Yeah.
Good day. I'd like to go make some NCAA dressing district. Anyway, I was also at the meeting in October. I looked at the briefing blowout materials, and I've also looked at the Stevens meeting. There's been no substantive, serious substantive discussion of TIFs. Ms. Metzger is at Munich Cap, which is essentially a TIF consulting type firm. In addition to getting paid by the city for what she's doing now, if the deal goes through with this or project and another project, just like her firm was involved in the Island Farm TIF, that will be more money, so, for her, for her firm. So what you're getting essentially is a snow job, and you're also getting a rush job. They are trying to rush this group. You've had no actual substantive written discussion of TIFs. Now, I sent you some material this, this weekend. Read it, because there's a lot of criticism of TIFs and how they're used. I want to make clear, I'm not knocking the project. The project is, could be better, could be worse. I'm very familiar with the site. At one time, I represented the owner of that site in the final days of the old mall. 25 years ago, I think. So all I'm saying to you is, let's put this on hold until we get a real education on TIF, just a couple quick. I suppose, not just for any project, the guidelines, this is the camel getting the tail under the net. Once they're set up, those guidelines will be so down that almost anybody can meet them. And they'll come in just like this gentleman did. Oh, we can't do the project if we don't get that money. Boy, I thought Bradley Ellis and Nicholas Simpson had a copyright on that quote. But here we hear it again. It's the standard developer's quote. It's right out of the Modern Developers Handbook, which, incidentally, you can't get on Amazon.com. The 10 practices, they'll be so down that anybody can meet them. And that's what you're going to wind up with. And I see this has all been cooked up here in, in the kitchen room above, on the second floor. So you're going to get stuff that's been predigested. It's, it's a rush job. So folks, let's be serious about this and do it the right way. Thank you.
All right, see no, no other public. Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to ask a question. Going back to the idlet project, which I was involved on the finance side on the Collector Road, there must have been a TIF policy at one time for the city, otherwise we wouldn't have gone and do that TIF. Am I wrong?
Not necessarily.
No.
Not an overall policy. There is a TIF. There is an agreement on what that equates to, but it's a singular decision point, right? One-off. Yeah, we're trying to avoid one-offs.
Can you explain, what is this, what is the idlet deal that people keep their?
Well, again, the idlet farm, they didn't...
Is it the village of idlet farms, the towns?
Yeah, the whole project was on both sides of what was then the, 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 it goes all the way to the mall.
Sure.
So that TIF.
Some district too, a few with that one.
Yeah, you go down there a few times. But that was, we financed that, and that was a big, of course, that was a big number.
Sure.
And then the city at the time just didn't want to front that cost.
Gotcha.
To let that be developed. So that was a communal benefit to the extent that, you know, you know, community. But it didn't go so well.
But that was to build the road out? Was it to build the road out or just for the development?
No, the road, just the central road.
Well, luckily, they built that road out because we had to use it. Just, okay, gotcha. Thank you. Thank you all so much. Seeing no other comments or questions, do we have consensus for them to continue to work on this, this application? Get it to us by, hopefully by Friday or Monday, and then we'll review it.
More information.
Yes. Okay, so keep working and get us the best. Thank you. Thank you all. Yes, thank you all. All right. Next up, we have the abandoned shopping carts legislation discussion from our housing, community development director, Yurbo.
Purdue, my colleague, you're the top of me, you're always playing on the permits.
Oh, yeah, we do have you. For two, for two items, stupid dude.
Three items. Okay, so this is something, I think, from my previous positioning of sitting here. This came one couple of times in the past.
Sorry, give me one second. Give us one moment. Thank you.
I'm doing.
Thank you.
And this, there's been some complaints and issues with abandoned shopping carts around the city that are taken from there. The retailer, and then sometimes people, a lot of times who walk or are doing transportation, use the carts, take them off the property, and then 99.999% of the time, they never make their way back home. And so in this case, currently, the way we operate is if it is not on the property, we give a correct action, another to the property owner, and if they don't pay it, then we abate it, and we are that process. On public property or other areas where they collect as well, we abate them. The issue now, when we abate, the county landfill does not accept shopping carts, so we have nowhere to dispose of. So working, looking at other towns and cities, there is an example, brought to mind here, which is what Plata. They, they have a very robust program. We do not anticipate doing any... Uh, we, we do not anticipate, uh, doing anything on this, ours is more. I couldn't find it online, I struggled, but Fruitland has one, uh, where it's more, uh, where it puts it on the retailer who's responsible for going around and identifying the carts throughout the town and collecting them. Uh, if the town of Fruitland abates it, uh, it's twenty-five dollar fine per cart. I know this because, uh, I had to, uh, pay the fine one time when I was responsible for that in Fruitland, so we ended up hiring somebody to do it, of course, uh, for five dollars, which is much cheaper than a twenty-five dollar fine. Uh, some, some retailers in the city have their own solutions. Uh, Aldi has a cart retrieval system where you put in a quarter or you get your quarter back and return the cart. Uh, I think Dollar General, one of the, one of the dollar stores, uh, they, um, they have a big hole in their shopping cart, so you can try to go out, you can't get out the door. Uh, Acne now has G or fence shopping carts, so if you try to go off the property with it, the shopping cart is lost. So there are some retailers that are doing things, there are still others that are having issues with it. Um, so we're looking for, uh, what I would suggest is something that is kind of model actually Fruitland does. Uh, I don't think we need to go as robust as what Plaidah, uh, because which is a registration program and some, some towns even have like, and that's just like one more thing we don't think we're worried about mentioning. Uh, but I think we can find something, uh, in the middle, uh, so we just wanted to throw that out there, that's something we can continue to have further discussion. Uh, there is no current draft. I do have some links that I have for myself and where I'd like to do, but there's no draft or anything, just, uh, I'm getting an idea of your thoughts.
Would you repeat again what Fruitland does?
So Fruitland has those many towns, uh, they, they have a formula where, um, if they, you're, you're responding to the way the retailer to go look for your shopping carts throughout their town. Uh, and if you don't respond and pick them up in the town of Fruitland does, so again, our situation in the city, we would give corrective action letter, give them a call or communicate some, give them a period of time to evade it. If they don't and we do it, then it's a twenty-five dollar fine per cart. And, and then they, we have a spot that we, uh, we have a fenced-in area in my department that we would store them so they could come and get them, but they would not be able to pick them up. So, in other words, if Dollar General's cart is found in my yard, Dollar General comes
to me, they pick it up from my yard?
Correct.
And so then that's a done deal, correct? And then what happens when you're saying if it is, if I don't res, I have no, I have no plan and it basically falls on Dollar General to do it?
Correct. If you, if you complain to us or one of my officers see it in the yard or see it on the property, then they will attempt to contact that store. I think what we would do at minimum is a voluntary form from those stores, be able to collect contact information so that we know who to contact when we got an issue. Um, so it's just, it's still like, we're, we're picking up.
But you will.
I intend to be.
Right.
Go off the city.
But you will be working on a draft that will bring this to fruition, that will create a policy for Salisbury and how they deal with, if you follow Fruitland, 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 then, um, it will be the responsibility of the owners of the cart to.
Correct.
Work, okay.
Two questions and or concerns. Uh, one, so again, we know that there's an unhoused population that uses the shopping carts.
Sure.
What, um, can, can you, you know, speak to that portion there? And then my second concern is, um, I know that, uh, when, uh, the city and council initiated the, um, the shopping bag, uh, legislation, I know that there was some stir up and some up, that retailers were upset by that legislation. Can we speak to again, if we're telling them, hey, there's another, you know, wave of, again, we will be taxing or enforcing a law that may cost you, what is our, our messaging?
So it's costing them already, because if they're not retrieving their cart, shopping carts, the average cost to a shopping cart is two hundred, three hundred dollars. So it's their property that they're not willing to, and they, so if they have to replace that cart, that's gonna cost them two hundred, three hundred dollars. Um, so, you know, we're helping provide them a service to locate.
Okay.
Where their shopping carts are. Um, you know, so, uh, today it would be beneficial for them to, you know, respond when we give them a call.
And your department has the bandwidth to take on this?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're already dealing with it.
Okay.
So it's just an average situation when we do collect them.
Sure.
You know, we're, we don't, we can't dispose of them if they're broken, uh, something that. So we can, I know like many of the retailers that they have a broken shopping cart, they can typically send it back to their distribution that are for repair or purpose. Uh, so I know that's what Walmart did, um, we would, remember, we would collect about a hundred of them, we would put an order in and they would send a truck to pick them up. So, and some retailers have that similar process. Uh, so, but it's just us helping them identify where their carts are and for them to go get them. Um, but if we have to continue to do it, there's costs associated with, with them.
Yeah, I missed the first part, I apologize. Um, are you collecting them and then calling the retailer to get them or are you just taking, trying to take them to the dump?
Uh, well, we can't take them to the dump. They don't, they don't, the landfill is not accepted.
Good.
So we, and that's us, because we forgot some of them that we were doing.
Those are broken?
Some of them are, some of them are working. Um, sometimes if, you know, we don't know which Dollar General it is, which hand of Dollar, um, but, uh, we would create a process where we would contact them if they see it and give them the time to.
Come get it.
Come get it. Twenty-four, seventy-two hours seems to be the standard.
Okay.
Between many towns and cities. And if they don't, we do it, then there's a problem.
Okay. If you, if you bring it back to them, you mean?
Pardon?
If you bring it back to them, it's a fine.
Uh, we, we actually have a spot that we would collect and hold them, because sometimes we get more than one or five for their places and you can pick them up, but we will not give them to them until they pay their cart.
Do we have a large quantity of these shopping carts that are disposed around the city?
We, they, they do, they do collect. A lot of times, other than they think up around the river, Shrek, so there's quite a few. Um, I know we've had several property owners throughout the city who have been cited because they had in their properties, uh, and so some of them also feel it's fair. Definitely.
So.
People are basically littering on their property and then they get, they have.
They get fined for it.
They get, yes.
Um, I know we spoke about this before, about them being on other properties or people probably unknowingly, I mean, it could be a rental and, um, they have the cart there, so are we still dealing with that the same way as calling the rental company or, or just that, that company?
If currently the process is, if, if we see it on their property, we give a corrective action letter to that property owner.
I've seen no other questions from council. Robert Taylor?
I have just a couple of, of quick thoughts on that. Uh, frankly, at least where I go around, I've never noticed any, uh, shopping carts littering on anybody's lawn. But, um, I guess what he's saying, you couldn't even have a shopping cart if somebody gave you one. And frankly, I would assume, suggest that some of the ones you get, people might wanna use them. I mean, if they have wheels, you can use them as kind of a mini wheelbarrow, almost. Uh, just a thought, and the metal ones exposing them, I, I would think that that's scrap metal value. Maybe not, maybe they don't accept scrap metal anymore, like they do in war. But anyway, um, I just wanted to say, if we're gonna get really concerned about shopping carts, let's get concerned about these scooters that are all over our streets. I almost saw two kids get a lot of it today on, so, on the Great Boulevard, plus the light lanes. Is it gonna take people getting killed before we decide to choose that? Because that's what it's gonna be. It's gonna be, I was a five-inch gun now when I was in Navy, and all the regulations are in red and specs. Quote is, that's blood for people who didn't know how to use the guns and they explode it. So anyway, that's just the thought on that. I wanna take a real person, I forgot to mention the word TIF. The money that pays the law owners is less revenue for the city. So essentially, it's the Horizon program, the same idea on steroids. So it will reduce the revenue to the city. Now, eventually, yes, if these projects are speculative and they wouldn't be built otherwise, and that is pure speculation, then eventually there will be tax revenue. But in the meantime, there won't be as much. So that's, that's why I say you really need to think about these tests before you.
Bob, could you repeat that first comment you made?
I don't have an answer for you. Uh, scooters.
Yeah.
The scooter shopping.
Recycle, recycle the shoppings?
The what?
The cost of scrap metal or the one before that?
Yeah, I just suggest that the metal carts, we need to get rid of them. I mean, there was a time they said it was scrap metal. But you didn't get much for it. You just got something.
Wheelbarrow, uh.
Oh, I knew what it was. Okay, so, yeah, I mean, so one of the, yeah, I was just gonna respond, one of the things is, there, there is a, a thing where if a retailer allows a customer to use it, uh, one of the notes that I, that I had for myself was, they can give them, provide them permission to use it. Uh, because technically in the state of Maryland, if you do take a shopping cart off the premises, it's against the law. It's considered.
I'm not talking about that. If one shows up on my driveway, I don't put it there.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm not being charged with that, so I didn't remove it. Correct. If it's on my driveway and it's abandoned property, then under the natural law of abandoned property, I can claim it and I can, you know, and I can use it as a mini wheelbarrow.
Thank you.
Is it, I mean, it's.
We'll, we'll, we'll move it forward, but, so, and I think that's a, that's a good por, portion to put in there. Again, we got, like I said about the unhoused persons, we don't wanna, you know, I, I know it's a theft and I'm not excusing that, but, uh, you know, I would just be mindful of that when you're using your legislation just to put in some.
Yeah, but there's a piece of that making happen.
And, and if people wanna make, you know, wheelbarrows and, and those kinda things.
Well, we've got no problem using the wheelbarrow, but don't be going around on these scooters, you know what I mean? I'm a little concerned.
I have the full power to do it.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so, uh, do we have cons, consensus from council to move this forward?
Yes.
Yes, thank you. All right. Next, Mr. Voto, we have the tax lien property MOU discussion. Talk to us.
Okay, so, um, one of the, one of the issues that we had, uh, in our city and county and, uh, in one case, uh, this goes back almost seventy-eight years of properties, uh, that have not paid the taxes and have, uh, acquired significant means, uh, as far as cleaning means where we go and cut the grass, take the trash off. So if you look at current of the top seventeen properties with unpaid taxes that are over fifteen thousand dollars, uh, you have, uh, eight hundred and seventy-five thousand, seven hundred and forty-seven dollars of unpaid property taxes. Uh, and again, this is seventeen properties that are over fifteen, that owe over fifteen thousand dollars. Um, these same properties have about sixty-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-seven dollars of abating means from the city where we cut the grass, we dispose of couches, shopping carts, everything else that are on the properties that we regularly clean, uh, that there's sixty-one thousand dollars of, of additional abating means. Uh, when we look at that, I do not have the unpaid county taxes, but they are probably about in line with us, uh, but you're looking just with their seventeen properties, nine hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars, almost nine hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars of unpaid taxes and means. Uh, and that is just seventeen properties. So, so on this, what we'd like to do and consider having talks with the county, is partnering with the county on acquiring, uh, these properties with long, with long-term means. Uh, so our goal is to do about five properties a year. Uh, we would target the ones with the largest taxes, uh, you know, the top five alone, we have four hundred and forty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars. Uh, so, and in those, of those properties, the S status settlement is about three thousand four hundred. Uh, these, this is the money that we will never see, uh, I mean, it's, it's, it's just not been paid and it won't be paid. Um, so our ide, our idea was to develop a joint MOU policy with the county, uh, and create an administrative process that would handle each property, uh, between the city finance and the county finance, uh, on this. So there are basically three ways to do this. Um, and the easiest way is in the donation process, where if the owner is still alive or anybody with interest and the family is, is, and the property is still alive, we would try to solicit a donation from them. Uh, and in this, we would, uh, look to waive the unpaid taxes in part, maybe in a whole, depending on the situation. Um, and it is, this is the quickest way to acquire a property if it's one that, that we really wanted for a purpose. Uh, we would then notify the county of the contract and, uh, provide that to the county. Uh, we would obtain a list of all unpaid means from the city and the county, direct to finances, do a title search, and then present a settlement sheet to the county that they're due to be stamped by the city and county to allow for the transfer. And then, uh, once the city will hold the title until disposition. And so in this case, in all these cases, if you sold the property, uh, the proceeds from the sale of the property would go to, towards the unpaid taxes and means. Uh, and then the idea is, at that point, the property becomes back on the tax roll to either be developed, uh, or re-updated. Uh, the next process, if we are not able to do a, a donation, will go into the tax sale process. So we would identify the property, uh, confirm in writing to the county and the city, or to the county that the city will purchase the property at tax sale. Uh, if it's redeemed at tax sale, the problem property owner shall pay a full amount of unpaid taxes and means owed to the city. So this is, if someone refuses to donate or we can't find anybody to communicate. Uh, in this case, it's not redeemed, uh, and the means are not paid, the city and county will allow the one with the stamp without requiring, uh, unpaid taxes and means for the sale. It's basically writing it down so that we can acquire it, but the property owner would still be responsible for those taxes and means. Uh, so then it gives you the opportunity to seek for through collections on that. Uh, and then the process, uh, which is defined in the MOU, uh, we're splitting the proceeds of the sale of the property between the city and the county, and the city will hold the title until the property is sold or on the disposition is determined. Um, and then the last, uh, and most, uh, time-consuming process is the receivership process. Uh, so this is where, uh, it's in our municipal code, or we can go after a vacant structure or lot, and the city will confirm with the county in writing that this has to actually go through the circuit court. As we posted a circuit court, then it can take some time for, for that process to go. We would probably seek more under the number two, uh, process at tax sale. Um, so some of these properties, they, uh, can, they can be built on. Uh, we do have a number of them that are in spots that really are not built, they're either close to a floodbank, flood plain, or a setback from fifty, or the lots too small to, to build anything. Uh, in these spaces, the goal would be to, uh, have them as either a small pocket park or just a, a green space, uh, and turn that over to field operations as part of the regular process as they take care of the parks and, and green spaces in the city. Um, but that's, that's kind of, so one example of, I got your, so the process was, like I said, determining, uh, in some cases, we could, we could partner with SNSH or another nonprofit, another nonprofit would determine that they have need. Uh, if not, then it would be listed for sale, uh, and then we, of course, would split, like I said, the surplus with the county. Uh, the oldest property in our city that has not paid taxes is one oh seven Catholic Street. Uh, this was owned by a man, J. Don Collier. Uh, his listed home address is one oh seven, one oh two Catholic Street, but that is not correct. Um, and so, did some research, uh, Mr. Collier was born in eighteen seventy-three, died in nineteen forty-four. He was an American man who at the age of twenty-seven was married, owned his own home on two oh four, fourth street in Salisbury. Fourth street no longer exists because that's where Route Fifty came through. And owned so many lots in Salisbury that one public notice referred to it as the lands of J. Don Collier. He drove it at one time with his, most people. He rented at one time most of the hills in this suburb. So this property, Mr. Collier died in nineteen forty-four, did some research in Dorton's Court, and property has not paid taxes since nineteen forty-five, has not been purchased at tax sale for seventy-eight years, owes sixty-nine thousand, five hundred and thirty-four dollars, and we have twenty hundred dollars lien on it, and the S-Dev value is thirty-seven hundred dollars. So that's just one property that is the longest property in our city that has not paid taxes. And every year it goes to tax sale, nobody has ever bought it because the taxes quickly accumulated even more than those properties were. And that is the situation of most of those, where all the properties on the top seventeen list, and all the ones on the top seventeen list are vacant, so they make a lot of stuff in the city. So that is, we gave an MOU for you all to look at. If you have any questions, let me answer.
Have you approached the county with the joint MOU?
Yes, we've had meetings with Monkidup and Pam Olum, and met with public Paul Wilkerson who was in. So they all are supportive of this. So they're trying to give me the MOU as well. So our idea is here, is everyone is, you know, interested, continuing the discussion, we would continue that discussion.
Do we have an idea if the, just for the number sake, is the city owed more in taxes than the county? I just want to know.
I don't know. Usually, the county and city taxes are roughly the same.
There are seventeen here. How many do you think in total are you looking at after, in addition to the seventeen that are creating this kind of financial issue?
Yeah, there's, I got probably about sixty, seventy on the list. Now, some of these properties haven't paid taxes for two or three years, some for five years. I think what we would also look at is, when would be qualified property for this? And I think we would probably be looking at the five-year mark, so if they're not paid in five years, but, sorry. But those properties, our goal is to go after the bigger ones first.
Why wait five years? How about like three years?
There's a different process through tax sale. So there may be value still in that, even though there may be back taxes, there may be opportunity for someone else to purchase it. Right now, most of these properties are so far upside down that there is no investment, so they continue just to incur costs with no movement. I'm not sure, after three years, if there's enough lost opportunity for someone to not want it through the traditional tax sale process.
There was a successful receivership on Cotton Tail about five years ago, it was very nicely done. And once the city was able to go through that process, received it, rehabbed it, and sold it to a family, and it's beautiful. And it really lifted all the homeless value in the neighborhood. Wonderful job.
I commend you for coming up with a possible solution to prevent this from becoming a bigger black hole.
Yeah, and it's, you know, the idea was to find a solution that the county was on the board with, that the city was on the board with. You know, this is something that shouldn't have been known decades ago, but I think, you know, we have, we have great people, I think, that are interested in this and recognize it as a problem, and agree that we have a market process.
I'm not sure if we even, do we, I mean, you don't really need our consensus to move forward with this, this is not, this is something where, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I mean, we would, you know, we're, you know, if you all, we're not consensus to move forward to a resolution yet, because we've not even had, this needs to go through the county council as well. So we want feedback, and if you all, as a team, have consensus that you like the idea and like the process, then it gives us a little bit more to go speak more with the county. And I mean, they know, you know, change a little bit, they might have some ideas, so if it's something that might be, might be some changes on their side.
I see you just, I guess, comments from administration and mayor's office. Because I see you all are the ones, actually, it's between the city and the county, so I want to make sure that.
Yeah, I think just with this program specifically, it's, our goal has been to address blight in multiple different ways, and this is a way for us to move blighted, dilapidated property forward and recoup that thing. I think the biggest thing we had to understand is, you know, that's eight hundred thousand dollars that we're probably not going to get back. But what we can do is reclaim the property, get into good standing, and find an owner who wants to put money into it. And I think that was our overall goal, and knowing that the county was on board too, because if it was fifty percent, it's still going to have too much of a burden on it. But knowing that they're on board, I think we are really in a unique spot to move forward, at least with these major projects, but then also in the future, using this as another tool to address our housing stock. So we're all in favor of, we think this is a really great opportunity to move forward and reclaim some property.
Well done. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Give us an update on Ann Street Village.
Yes. So as we had some discussions, there has been a couple of interested parties in partnering with us on Ann Street. And, you know, two different ones that we've had conversations with that have a couple of different ideas. So after some internal discussions, we wanted to come to council and see, get your opinions and your thoughts, and moving forward and seeking possible future partners with Ann Street. And so we have a couple of ways we can go. Our idea is to do what's called a request room, which is what we would put out a quick post on Purman's website, the, we're interested in partnering with Ann Street, whether it's partnering in the operation of Ann Street, or maybe parties interested in purchasing Ann Street. And then, so based on a questionnaire that we would put together, if there is multiple interested parties, then we would seek to put out a RFP, which would then require full proposals. And so there could be multiple organizations, if there's not, there's just one, then that gives us the latitude to go into negotiations with multiple organizations. So that's kind of like where we stand, you know, it's a, it's a tough operation, and you know, we have two people in the homeowners division who spend most of their time in that industry, working with us. So there's a lot of issues and needs there that as a city, you know, the way that it was initially structured, probably should have had a different game plan when we began. So not that we can't change, not that we can't move in that direction, it's just, you know, we're one of very few governments that are doing this. Most of these around the country, governments assist, either provide land or assist in setting these up, and generally, it's nonprofits come in to run them. So, you know, the original idea was that we would raise money and get support, but you need to have somebody who's one hundred percent dedicated to their time to fundraising, which is, we don't have anybody to do that. So that's kind of where we're looking more for partnership, to help us in whatever capacity that we can, we can get. So appreciate any feedback from council, your qualifications.
Is it currently full?
No, we have about fourteen, fifteen people in there, that's about the max that we get in.
And so, yeah, I like to appreciate the scope of having a nonprofit come in, again, add that helping touch where the city can't go in, but just want to make sure. So we have two different options, where one, the city stays in some capacity, and then another, where we don't. So we're entertaining all, we put that RF, with the R.
Request for expression.
Yes. So when we put that out, we're kind of placing it out, and then we'll take when we get back in, but for now, the city does want to have some sort of partnership or piece of Ann Street.
Again, it depends on the proposals that come in. I mean, as far as where we would, you know, if we had a partnership with a nonprofit that was doing the operations, in that case, the city would still own the land and own the infrastructure. There may be organizations that are interested in purchasing just the infrastructure, and we still own the land, and it's taxed, it's not taxed, or somebody could decide to purchase all of that. So, you know, there's various options for that. So we want to see what the interest is in the community and in other nonprofits. I'm muting this because.
Do you feel you have a viable partner in the, in your loop right now?
There are two that I think are possible.
Give me one moment. Mr. DeMoe.
That's where I got it, sorry.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you.
Sorry, you have two prospects currently?
Correct. Two that I think are two organizations that would basically, they, one definitely has the resources, and one, we does have the resources, but would take some time to bring it up.
Okay.
But I think in either case, it would be, there would be a transition period, so in any sense, for probably maybe six months.
And I think I know of a nonprofit that would probably be willing to help, as a matter of fact, they have outreach center in that neighborhood, in the community, so maybe they can help.
What do we plan to go live with the R, request for interest? Yes.
Sure, we have to write it yet.
Okay, good.
There'll be a cooperation between my department, between your department, if you have a suggestion that we can reach out to, if that information can be found to me. Typically, we post things like this on Purman's, on email, on the marketplace, the website there, we do post it on the city's social media pages as well, so, but then all the responses will come back through Purman, and then I will get those.
Okay.
I just have a concern, there are lots of organizations that do good work, but there are some organizations that also have requirements upon the residents, or the unhoused folks that they take care of, and when it comes to religious requirements. What, I do like the fact that the city being involved means that there is not something like that being imposed on somebody just to get the help that they need. So in my view, I would really like to see the city stay involved in some capacity, just to make sure that we're giving an opportunity to folks who may not be able to get the help they need in other organizations, with other organizations. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Sure, and there is existing legislation that states that if you, that is about to make that illegal, so it's going to remove the discrimination.
Even if they are not receiving state funding, even if they are not, because that's, there are quite a few organizations out there in the community that do not provide that, and they deliberately refuse state funding or local funding because of that.
That's, I mean, it's one of the pieces of education that the HCD has to forward, and it's one of their priority pieces. Because I've heard, it's been on the news.
Yeah, I've heard about it, I just, I wanted to make sure that it was going to cover those that don't accept funding from the state government money.
Whether somebody purchases it or not, but even as long as we own the land, you know, we can ensure that in any of you, any agreement, that those are put in place, to ensure that that's, that they're not, not insured.
Does the city qualify for any grants that would help with this? What does this actually cost the city to have this in place for a year, two years, where it's been under construction?
Right, well, because our bathrooms are not considered handicap accessible, we do not qualify for grants. So that's part of the, we have a bathroom, there's a trailer, and there's steps to it, and there's no, look at it, there's no feasible way to make it handicap, you can't put a ramp in it, there's no room for it. So that's the, so that's the one issue that we're going to address.
So it's come from the city budget to the cost for this, correct?
We do have some donations from, that we raised through the community foundation that helped pay the hospital bills and staff that works out there, who's, they are sitting by the staff, but we do have grants that help pay the salaries. So as far as, we're still, all the initial funding that's provided for it, that's what we're using for banners and property buildings.
Okay. We'll see, no other public comments, we appreciate that, we look forward to seeing another update and hopefully, you know.
Are we good for it?
Yes, definitely. Thanks. It's my scene.
We're going to keep you busy.
Very busy, very busy, very busy.
You should be sitting up here, Mayor.
We'll move forward to administration and council comments.
Sure, just a couple real quick. We launched our very city, we're kind of getting back to event season, so looking forward to everything that's coming forward. This past Thursday, we had our first Poets Corner Series right here in this building. It was exciting to see a different type of event coming to downtown. The next one is April eleventh, from six to eight P.M., so if you're interested in poetry, we invite you to come out and present your poems. We're getting back outside this upcoming Saturday. Our Downtown Business Alliance, that is newly formed, are hosting the Spring Street Market on Saturday from twelve to five. It's a thing similar to like a Third Friday, but with a strong focus on downtown businesses and shopping with some live entertainment. So I'm glad we've got partners in the community downtown who are interested in helping us do some events, so that is, again, twelve to five downtown, Spring Street Market. Those are the two updates we have from our office.
Thank you, Andy, for those updates, I'm looking forward to that, that event downtown. Hopefully that brings some people down, and hopefully the weather's good for that. We'll just go right down the line to Councilwoman Gregory.
Ah, yes, well, he took the one thing that I was going to mention, which was the market. I hope to see you guys down there, it looks to be a good time. There's, there are going to be lots of vendors, I think there are up to a hundred and two vendors right now, so it is going to be, there's going to be a lot of folks out there, yeah. There's going to be a fancy hat contest, so you can come out there with your Easter finest, and come on out, and I'm not sure what the setup for the prize or rewards are, but I know they're having some contests and that sort of thing. The other thing I wanted to update folks with is, I attended the Disability Advisory Committee meeting this week. The mayor was supposed to be in attendance, but unfortunately was unable to make it, so I'm hoping he will be able to make the next one. There's a lot of good work being done in the community, but most of all, I want to send a shout out to Salisbury's own Dom Sessa, Dominique Sessa, she won Miss Wheelchair Maryland.
Yes.
And she will be going to the national competition, so I want everybody to send the best thoughts and wishes, and fingers crossed, and I believe they will probably be fundraising to help cover the cost of her going, so hopefully, hopefully, I wanted to congratulate her publicly, and hopefully, she will succeed at the national level. I know she will, she's amazing. That's it for now.
Good, thank you so much, Councilwoman Gregory. Councilwoman DeShio.
Shout out to Mike Dryden, I had two emails sent to me regarding potholes, and also a question about a grant, and I forwarded it to the people in charge with the city, Joe Allen and also Mike, and it was taken care of right away, so thank you for that. I was happy to attend the Salisbury Fire Department graduation and swearing-in on Wednesday, and the one piece that strikes me because of my father's involvement in the past, is the traditional piece that the fire department and the police department both really hold.
is the traditional piece that the fire department and the police department both really hold high, with high regard. So thank you for that invitation, Chief Frampton. Also, put on your calendars there Craig Faust, I don't know if I'm pronouncing his name correctly. April twentieth, which is Earth Day, he's going to be, he's going to give me further information, which I will share about cleaning up and promoting, you know, us participating in cleaning up in our city.
Thank you, Councilwoman DeShiel. Councilwoman Jackson? Glad to have you back. Did you see, yes.
Just want to reiterate on the community Easter egg hunt that my organization and some other organizations in the community are hosting March the thirtieth. It would be held at the Village at Mitchell Pond, one seventeen, eleven seventeen Parsons Road is free. We have a special appearance by the Easter Bunny. And we invite, we're inviting everyone to come out and have a good time. Play the candy games, fun, whatever, it's free.
Councilwoman Jackson, is there age limit for those to get the key?
No, it's unaged.
Just bring your Easter basket.
Sean will be the Easter Bunny.
I will pay cash money for that. I will buy a house for myself.
I've been a couple things in my past lives, so. Councilwoman Blake.
It looks like many of us have covered many things here, so that's good. Usually by the time it gets to me, major announcements are already made. But just as always, please, if you're healthy enough, donate blood, also donate plasma. I'm also in big need. Individually, I'm not able to donate plasma. But I do donate blood regularly and consider being an organ donor. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. And so I wanted to attend the fire department swearing-in, but I was called across the bridge to the game and unfortunately my girl was lost. And it was, it was a, but they fought a hard fight. So since, again, they still won the Bayside Regional Championship. They're still champions there. First time since nineteen eighty-five, so before I was even thought of. So that definitely deserves some praise for those girls. They fought a good hard fight there. I want to make a mention to folks to make sure you're being safe. The weather is getting warmer, folks are out, again, having fun and enjoying themselves. But please be safe, whether you're driving, riding your recreational vehicles, please be safe. And let's make sure we're all here for the summer. My fellow council members highlighted a lot of events in the community. I know the Salisbury J.C.'s are doing the Adaptive Easter Egg Hunt next Friday at two P.M. at the Falcons Youth Stadium in Fruitland. That's for those folks who are, either have some visual or physical impairments. They do that every year, so I'm glad they're bringing that back. That's next Friday at two P.M. And we look forward to the weather warming up, getting some nice cool events for the community to do. And with that, this meeting is now adjourned.